Mrs. Solis?
Present.
Seven members present.
Thank you, Ms. Richards. We talk a lot in this district about engage, empower, and inspire. From, really from our custodial staff, to our principals, to our superintendent, to our board members, we are all truly in service and supporting our teachers because those are the people that we depend on the most to engage our kids and our students, to make sure that they are on the right track. We appreciate what they do. And we are in a national teacher, approaching a national teacher shortage. And Colorado is in the unenviable position of being 50th in our country in paying teachers a competitive wage. And so we are always looking for teachers. And tonight, we are going to be seeing one of the ways that creatively, we're looking to do that. And so you can look forward to that in our meeting. Under empower, our community plays a huge part in empowering this district. We are thankful again and again for an MLO that was passed almost a year and a half ago now. But tonight, we'll get to approve some contracts for things that we have desperately needed for a long time. Some for contract for computers, a contract for buses, and one big contract for roof at Scott Elementary. And so we want to say thank you again to our public, to our voters for empowering our kids and enabling us to empower our kids. And finally, under inspire, we have often find ourselves in the position of being inspired by our students rather than inspiring our students. And tonight, we have a large and great group of students from the Dream Team, Dream Team Scholars who are here and will be recognized. And we are excited to have you in the audience and with us tonight. Are there any persons needing to speak before the board? And I don't see any. Okay. Just wanted to make sure. Ms. Richards, would you give us an update on what we did in our work session?
Yes. Board of Education President Michael Matthews began the work session with comments and updates from board members, and then proceeded to review the calendar of upcoming events. Dr. Stacy Dattery, Assistant Superintendent of Academic Achievement, provided information on the district's priority improvement and turnaround schools, which are Meeker Elementary and Fred Charter's School of Innovation. Progress towards their improvement goals was presented, and board members had time for questions. The board members attended the reception for Greeley Dream Team Scholarship recipients, and that concluded the work session.
Thank you, Ms. Richards. Dr. Pilch, it's time for your report, and I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, President Matthews. So we have lots of celebrations tonight. But first, I want to start with a little precautionary tale, if I may. So we do have a bit of a outbreak of norovirus at one of our schools, at Franklin Middle School. Maybe outbreak is a bit of an exaggeration. Any of you students at Franklin or have children at Franklin Middle in the audience? Oh, good. They're not here. That's good. So we do have about 60 or 70 students who are out ill, and about a dozen, upwards of a dozen, teachers who are out ill with what seems to be the norovirus. We did go in, our custodial crews went in over the weekend, and disinfected all surfaces. But we still had kids going down today and staff going home today. So we do have our custodial crew in tonight with 10 additional custodians to disinfect again, and to do more work, especially in terms of Chromebooks and those kinds of surfaces as well that children use every single day. So I guess I would just say this. If you have symptoms, you need to stay home for two days symptom-free before you come back to school. And really, we mean this. I mean, it's very contagious, spreads very easily. So we just need kids and staff who are sick to stay home and stay home until they're well. And lots of hand washing, lots of hand washing with soap and water. And hopefully, it only will impact the one school. I was asked the question about, you know, when do we actually call school off? And I remember a few years ago, we had a similar case of a virus at one of our elementary schools. And really, we kind of set the threshold for student absences at 30%-ish of when we would maybe call school off. And/or if we're not able to staff the school, or if we don't have the custodial crew to go in and get the school cleaned properly, disinfected properly, before children come back into school. But, you know, to turn 600 children loose and not have school tomorrow, when we have fewer than 100 who are sick, I think would not be the best decision on our part. Kids need to be in school. Middle schoolers do not need a free day off home alone. That I do know for sure. So hopefully, we'll get through this virus and flu season and keep everybody healthy. Lots of celebrations tonight. We're going to recognize the Greeley Dream Team Scholarship recipients here in just a moment. But first, I want to brag a little bit about athletics here in District 6. I especially want to recognize the high school athletes who have really been a standout this last athletic season. Greeley West High School Boys Basketball made it down to the 32 final teams in the state. They came into that round and won in the first round, and then unfortunately, were taken out in the next round. But kudos to them for being one of 32. Greeley Central High School, boys and girls both are part of Sweet 16, which means they've made it down to 16 teams in the state. And they're now competing against the best 16 teams in the state of Colorado. Pretty exciting for our kids here in Greeley and their parents and their coaches. And then also, I want to recognize Andrew Aliraz, who I think we will probably try to bring before you all for a recognition. Yet this spring, he is a senior at Greeley Central High School. And Andrew is, as I hear, the number-one ranked wrestler in the state of Colorado. He is a four-time state championship winner, which is really unheard of, and really quite the athlete. And we're proud to have him from Greeley Central High School. And I understand, it looks like he may be going to University of Northern Colorado. So we'll keep him right here in the community. Some of you are nodding, so that's great news. And now, I think that, oh, I have one more recognition I don't want to forget because we won't have a board meeting, I don't think, before this. We are sending off our communications director to an international, not off, international conference.
On fire.
See you, Teresa. We're sending Teresa, our Chief of Communications, and our teacher Matt from Jefferson High School, along with the CEO of Habitat for Humanity, Sherri Whit-Brown. And they will be presenting at an international Habitat for Humanity conference in late March. And really, sharing the program between Jefferson High School and construction trades, and Habitat for Humanity here in our community, and the work that those students have done alongside construction workers building those Habitat for Humanity homes. It's very exciting to have been invited to be a part of the presentation. And they will actually be there at the night of our March board meeting, or I would have wanted to go with them, to brag about the amazing work that's going on. And kudos, I know that Larry Green is here in the audience today, principal at Jefferson High School. We are so proud of this partnership. And I know Habitat for Humanity of Weld County is also equally proud of it. And for us to get to show it at an international level, very, very exciting. So congratulations, and we look forward to hearing how it goes when they come back. And now, finally, all of these wonderful folks here in our audience tonight are here as a part of our Greeley Dream Team Scholarship recognition. And we are so proud of all of you, and very proud of the Dream Team staff and volunteers who have also supported all of you. So at this time, I'd like to invite Elizabeth Barber, the Executive Director of the Greeley Dream Team, to come to the podium and to kick off this recognition for us.
Well, good evening. Thank you so much. We are so excited to be here to share in this celebration with you this evening. As a nonprofit organization, the Greeley Dream Team works to turn dreams into realities. We work with the diverse student population by mentoring, educating, and empowering them today to transition to become tomorrow's leaders. So we are excited tonight to present our latest round of scholarship winners. For the past many years, the Greeley Dream Team has assisted several students in making college a reality. In fact, in the past 17 years alone, the Dream Team has given out over $421,700 to over 300 deserving students. And tonight, we have our newest round of students that'll be here with us. This scholarship is offered to students in our program who demonstrate academic potential, have had involvement in community and service areas, and/or maybe have even overcome a personal barrier to make it to where they are today. This year, a total of $21,600 will be awarded in scholarships to these students, some of which was actually made possible through our annual Fairway to the Future Golf Tournament held each May. This year, the Board of Directors has named, or has given $1,200 to each of the 18 scholarship recipients you see before us. At this time, I will announce their names. When I call your name, please come forward. I ask that the audience holds their applause until all the names have been read. The first is Nico Antuna with Northridge High School. Elijah Cortez, Northridge High School. Rita Darji, Northridge High School. Daphne Flores, Greeley West High School. Angel Garcia, Greeley West High School. Yessenia Garcia, Greeley West High School. Ashton Kerwin, Northridge High School. Manuel Lopez Arredondo, Greeley West High School. Claudia Martin, Northridge High School. Tomas Gabe Martinez, Northridge High School. Emily Nolan, Greeley Central High School. Alfredo Ochoa Hernandez, Greeley Central High School. Daniel Rodriguez, Northridge High School. Maya Rodriguez Salis, Jefferson High School. Maria Serna, Greeley Central High School. Idalis Tovar, Jefferson High School. And Jade Warner, Greeley Central High School. Members of the board, I present to you this year's 2018 Dream Team Scholarship recipients. I'm going to squint you together for a photo. Eighteen. There's seventeen here. You weren't expecting 20 behind you, were you?
No, it's awesome. Of course I was. This is my favorite.
Okay. On behalf of the Greeley Dream Team Board and Directors and Staff, we thank you so much for celebrating us with this evening. We're so appreciative of this partnership and this opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you all for joining us. Congratulations again. And special thanks and congratulations to all of our parents who are leaving right now, the unsung heroes that get those kids to school every day and make sure that they're on track. Before we go any further, we're going to need to approve an agenda. And so I would gladly accept a motion, a motion from someone to do that.
I move that the Board of Education of Weld County School District 6 approves the agenda as presented.
Second.
Ms. Richards, would you give us a roll call vote, please?
Any discussion?
Oh, is there any discussion?
Yes.
There's discussion. Ms. Richard, Dr. Richard.
So I'd like to pull Item 7.06, the Superior Roofing Contract, out of the consent agenda and have it placed on the, wherever you would like to place it on the agenda.
Why don't we just take that and put it on the very end of our agenda? Is that okay with you?
Perfect.
All right.
I would also like to pull an item from the consent agenda, and that is Item Number 7.04.
Okay. We'll add that to the end of the meeting as well. All right. Thank you both. Having removed those from the consent and added those to our regular agenda, now can we proceed to a roll call vote? Ms. Richard?
Mr. Hayfley?
Aye.
Mr. Lydiak?
Aye.
Mrs. Mash?
Aye.
Mr. Matthews?
Aye.
Ms. Pappas?
Aye.
Dr. Richard?
Aye.
Mrs. Solis?
Aye.
Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you. This is going to be confusing with Ms. Richards and Dr. Richard. We need to approve now our consent agenda, and so I would accept a motion to approve that.
I move the Board of Education of Weld County School District 6 approves items as presented on the consent agenda and authorizes the officers to sign any and all contracts.
Second.
And as amended.
Ms. Richards, may we have a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Hayfley?
Aye.
Mr. Lydiak?
Aye.
Mrs. Mash?
Aye.
Mr. Matthews?
Aye.
Ms. Pappas?
Aye.
Dr. Richard?
Aye.
Mrs. Solis?
Aye.
Motion carries seven zero.
All right. Thank you so much. We're now to the portion of the meeting, Dr. Pilch, where we're going to have honor some student representatives, or hear from our student representatives, actually.
I think that Ms. Olson is going to get them. She just ran from the room. So we should be hearing from our Council of Student Reps here in just a moment. May I point out something that was on consent agenda while we're waiting?
Sure.
You just approved?
Yes.
You just approved over half a million dollars in Chromebooks for our next Chromebook refresh to go out with our Millevi override dollars. So I think it's four schools that we're going to push those Chromebooks out to. We're going out to Heath, Madison, Montford, Shoshine, Scott, Jefferson, six schools. So the next big push for new Chromebooks as part of our refresh with our Millevi override. So thank you.
Thank you.
Are we, are our students here?
Students ready?
All right. Thank you, Ms. Olson. Students, I would like to invite you to the podium. Come on up. We'll let you introduce yourselves. Tell us what school you go to and who you are, and then we'll let you give us your update. Thank you. Welcome.
I'm Gianna Wymera. I'm a sophomore at Greeley Central.
And we came here as representatives. Collectively, so our big thing right now, Friday, this Friday, actually, March 1st, we have our District 6, District Wide Volleyball Tournament, where it's our initiative for Weld-Meldor. We try to bring together all different high schools in the community along with all of our high schools. We have up to two, two to three teams from each high school participating. So if you guys would like, please come and support. It's at Greeley Central, and it starts at 6 o'clock, I believe.
Admission is free. Yeah. We've also been, our student council has been very active. They've been able to hold homecoming, which is obviously great, to bring the student body together. We've had trick-or-treat at the castle, which is amazing because it brings the community together. Anybody is open and welcome to come and have some fun, make some crafts.
And then, again, locally at Greeley Central, all of our school clubs are working on, with our local key club, to help out our Thirst Project, which is to build wells in different parts of Swaziland, where each group has to raise a specific amount of money to help out our key club. And currently, we're also working along with the student council representatives, too. For our musical this year, Barnum, we are putting together a carnival, where we want to go ahead and bring in the community in different schools to help out, either to put up a podium, or put up something, just come and support Greeley Central for our spring musical this year.
That's about it?
Yes.
Well, thank you so much.
Ms. Pappas?
So I have had the good fortune to attend two of the meetings of the student rep council. And I just want to tell you how impressed I am that this volleyball tournament is happening Friday. When I first, the first meeting I went to, and you were talking about, I was like, there's no way they're going to pull this off. And here you are, and you have your team. So I'm just very impressed with the work that you do, and thank you for letting me be a part of that. So.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you so much. Now, we're to the part of a recognition of some, for Project Teacher Find. And so I'll turn that over to you.
Thank you, President Matthews. This is just a wonderful board meeting tonight with so much recognition, and seeing so many students come before the Board of Education, because this is really what our work is about. And it is that time of year where a lot of kids are finishing up their senior year, as you saw tonight with the Greeley Dream Team recipients, and now with the two students we're going to introduce you next, who are part of Project Teacher Find. And we hope and plan on them coming back and being teachers in District 6. So I'll turn it over to Ms. Overton, Assistant Superintendent of Human Resources.
Good evening, President Matthews and Dr. Pilch, and members of the board. I'm pleased to present to you tonight our Project Teacher Find Scholarship recipients, recipients. Project Teacher Find is a collaborative, grow-your-own effort between District 6, as identified in Innovation 2020, and with UNC, to develop a recruit and recruit high school students into promising teachers. The scholarship provides funding each year to future District 6 teacher candidates. High school students are recommended by their counselors, and applications are screened by a scholarship committee composed of District 6 and UNC faculty. Candidates must maintain at least a 2.75 GPA to be eligible for continued support. They know that we eagerly await for their graduation when they can come back to District 6 as teachers. This evening, we are honoring two Project Teacher Find Scholarship Award winners. These students have worked hard through high school, throughout high school, and will give just as much effort in college. We look forward to them shaping the lives of District 6 students in the future. Please join me in honoring the following students. Hunter Miller, Greeley West. Hunter Miller is the son of Brent and Alyssa Miller. At Greeley West High School, Hunter has excelled academically while also being involved in athletics. He participated in the boys' basketball and baseball programs, and joined the tennis team his junior year. Currently, Hunter is participating in the Unified Physical Education Program at Greeley West, where he sees an excellent opportunity to interact, support, and observe how other students overcome educational challenges. At UNC, Hunter will pursue a degree in mathematics and history education. This sparks from his desire to make an impact in young people's lives. When Hunter is not in school, he enjoys spending time with his friends and his family, including his older brothers who have a strong influence in his life. He continues to be a positive role model in the classroom as well as the community. He hopes to connect teaching with his love of sports and become a coach, too, as he sees this as an opportunity to give to the community in a rewarding, challenging, yet fun way.
Congratulations. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Our next recipient is Aleisha Cobos from Early College Academy. Aleisha Cobos is the daughter of Brandy and Inez Cobos. She is currently attending Early College Academy, where she will obtain her high school diploma, along with her Associate of Arts degree obtained through Ames Community College. She is in the National Honor Society, where she is the historian. She is also a member of the National Society of Leadership and Success through Ames. At UNC, Aleisha will be pursuing a degree in mathematics, as well as to look into English as a second language program. This sparks from the interest to explore her Hispanic cultural background. Outside of school, Aleisha is actively involved in her church, and has said this involvement planted the seed in her love for teaching. She likes singing and playing the guitar at her church, as well as being part of the youth group. She enjoys sports such as volleyball, soccer, and baseball, and outdoor activities. She believes this fall will bring new experiences and is looking forward to these new opportunities. Thank you for joining us this evening, and we wish you success as you continue in your educational endeavors, and to shape the lives of future generations, and to come back and work in District 6. Thank you, board.
Thank you. And thank you both for considering education, especially with the skills you have in math. We appreciate your consideration, and thank you. Last, or not last, I'm sorry. But next up, we have a report from Mr. Lydiak. He's been away for a while, and is back and wants to report on the National Conference, the NSBA Conference that he went to in Washington, DC.
Yes.
So I'll give it to you.
All right. Thank you, President Matthews, Dr. Pilch, and my fellow board members. It has been a very busy four weeks, and I had the privilege and honor to attend the National Association of School Boards Advocacy Institute. And let's see, Mr. Matthews, you said I had two and a half hours to do this presentation?
As long as you need.
Or five minutes?
Just about everybody's left.
It really is an honor and opportunity to help bring forth some of those issues that we, as school board members, along with our fellow board members across the state and the nation, are working with our legislators to address. And we're going to try out my clicker here, so I can work from my seat, and talk about the, a couple of acronyms that I want to go through real quickly. I know my fellow board members know these, but I thought I would go ahead and revisit them for our audience. CASB is our Colorado Association of School Boards. And under CASB, we have our advocacy group that works with our federal legislators called the Federal Resolution, Federal Relations Network. So again, Colorado Association of School Boards is CASB. We'll get these basic terms out of the way. FRN is the Federal Relations Network. And we all attended January 27th through the 29th, the Advocacy Institute 2019 in Washington, DC. And I do want you to notice that upon our arrival, they did reinstitute the operating branches of the government. So the government was up and running as soon as we arrived. That was a relief. So this is our group. We actually had a great turnout from across Colorado. We had over 18 people from different school boards attending. And so this was our group picture on the hill there. And again, while I make light of a few things here, we really were there on very meaningful, purposeful work. The National School Board Association, again, does work with our federal advocacy work. In their prior years, the previous two years have been very focused on ESSA. And I will say that it is because of their hard work that much of that local control pendulum has swung back to the states. But this year, now that ESSA has been approved and is being implemented, this year, there was a new focus for NSBA. And so today, this evening, I'm going to talk to you about IDEA law and funding. And IDEA stands for the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act. This law was actually written, or signed into law back during General Ford, Gerald R. Ford, he's not a general, Gerald R. Ford's time in office. And that was actually 19... he's not a general, Gerald R. Ford's time in office, and that was actually 1975. It's amazing it's been around that long. And so NSBA, their advocacy effort was in and around this idea of bringing and modernizing IDEA, but most importantly, actually funding it. So again, their title was "It's a Great Idea," is NSBA's campaign to modernize and fund IDEA. I had asked Dr. Pilch and Dr. Dattery if they could provide me with some background information and homework, if you will, that we were required to take to our attendance at NSBA. And at your chair is a printout of the questions and answers that we were asked to ask our administration, as well as to take with us. And I will tell you, even as a somewhat veteran board member, I was still surprised at and taken aback about some of this information, and just the sheer numbers that we're addressing. And I'm going to go ahead and break that out individually. When you look at, you know, let me step back and say, it is such a wonderful law, and it's a great opportunity to serve those students of ours that do have special needs, and that we are helping to reach their full potential. But again, with these disabilities and special needs, comes, it comes at a need for additional and extra-special resources to address those students. And if you look at the Greeley Evans District Six alone, we served this last year 2,541 students that fell under our IDEA needs. Our cost for those students was around 818 million, $340,000, I'll round up. And IDEA law, while it is implemented since 1975, and we are required by federal law to support those wonderful students and their needs, the law also indicated that they, that the federal government would provide up to, or at least 40% of those costs in our deal with our federal government. And yet, in implementation, Greeley Evans only receives about 14.6%. And in fact, you will find that statewide across Colorado, it is well below the 15% level across the entire state. And nationally, we found that that number is 16%. So on Tuesday, January 30th, I believe that was, was the kickoff for NSBA's advocacy work and lobbying, and we announced that it's a great idea for IDEA, and that is to modernize and fully fund the law. And Representative John Katko from New York, and I forget what precinct or whatever, but that representative is leading somewhat of that bipartisan, nonpartisan work to bring forth this bill. And I also applaud this representative in the fact that he adopted two young boys that actually had special needs and disabilities, and so it, this is indeed very important and resonates to him very strongly. So it was great to see that kickoff. And as our part, as our Colorado representatives from the great state of Colorado, we were charged with visiting all of our legislators and bringing them up to date on the IDEA law, and in and aware, you know, we can look to hopefully, look to the federal government for improvements and better implementation of that law. So here, we have Representative Nogusa, a new representative to the Capitol, and again, this is our group picture with them, with him. And then we saw Senator Gardner. He welcomed us into the office, and in fact, I think we did end up meeting with all but one of our state, I mean, of all of our federal legislators and senators. So again, it was a great reception. It was great to communicate those, you know, personal stories and those facts and numbers that, again, until you get it into black and white, you really don't realize how significant it is. But it was also really important to share those success stories and to share those wonderful students that have benefited from this great, great law. So again, IDEA law and funding, our purpose was to go out to Washington and really highlight the need to fulfill what everybody agreed was a long overdue promise of fully funding access to public education for all students, including those students who do have significant challenges. And they have great potential and an ability to serve in their future life if we can indeed help them, you know, meet their special needs and requirements of today. With that said, I will offer up questions, and if necessary, ask Dr. Dattery to be my phone-a-friend for any questions I can't.
Or Ms. Sponsler, to do the funding.
There we go, Ms. Sponsler. But anyway, it really was enlightening. The conference also had wonderful breakout sessions, again, some more presentations similar to what we saw at CASB with, you know, those unique challenges of our youth and their mind development and their social and, what would you call it, their emotional needs and support systems. There was also some incredible historic perspectives. John Meacham was one of our presenters, and I was very intrigued and impressed by him, and listened to one of his audibles, got, downloaded one of his books for my flight back. But no, I think I really do appreciate the fine work that Dr. Dattery put into this IDEA homework, and I really invite the board to review that. And I think back to, back when I was on this board in the early years, and Dr. Bergarius was so, such a, so adamant and such a, so advocate, such a great advocate for the concerns and the need around our IDEA funding and that, the impact that it has on us as a district. Because that's $18 million that we're only getting 14.6% of. I should stop there, if you'd welcome any other questions? Was any of this a surprise?
Ms. Mash has a question.
I was just wondering, what would it take for that promise to be kept by the government? It's already a law, so is it when they go to make the budget that they need to add that back in somewhere? Or what is the next step to make that happen?
You know, that's a really good question, Ms. Mash, and I would, I would say it really is looking at our legislators to, for them to be held accountable for the fact that this is law and that they really do need to make the appropriations in law when they're building the budget. This would maybe, it's a little close to home, but somewhat akin to Amendment 23, and where, you know, we get to conveniently say that, well, this is, you have to do this, but we're not finding all the funds this year, and then, you know, maybe next year. And of course, now we're looking at since 1975, this has not been fully funded. And I want you to know that NSBA is looking to have it fully funded, not even just the 40%, which, right now, we would all jump for joy if that was achieved. But that's where, again, as board members, we must continue our advocacy at both the state and the federal level.
Mr. Lidiac, I have a question. What was the thinking about the success possibly of achieving 40% or even higher percentage of our federal funding for IDEA?
Well, the success comes in very, and again, I draw an analogy to say fully funding, you know, kindergarten full decay for our state, but being able to really have the true funds to do the job that we're tasked with, and I hate to use the word "job," but the cause that we're privileged to get to do in serving these kids. But as our administration knows and as this board has heard, it is so hard to get and retain, you know, our special needs teachers and instructors and support staff, and just if we could really give them the tools and support that they need to do their job. And it was a very common theme, that many of our special ed teachers and instructors are either significantly getting burned out, or they're actually subjected to some, you know, challenging work environments. That bottom-line resources can make a huge difference. And so we do pool, again, over 84% of our general ed funds to help, you know, service those students. And then we look at, well, what is, how does that potentially impact, you know, our regular ed, our general ed students? So I hope I'm not misrepresenting or misspeaking, but yeah, those are the hard, hard issues and hard questions. So I don't know if I answered your question specifically, Mr. Matthews, but yes, if we were to even see the funding at 40%, it would be a significant amount of funds that we could direct for both our special ed students as well as our gen ed, so.
Yeah, if I'm doing the math right, that would be about $4.5 million the federal government would put into our local district.
And if I may add, Mr. Matthews, as you all know, for our students with more significant needs, we do center-based programs. So what that means is that children with significant disabilities most often are in another school other than their home school of attendance, and very possibly not the school of their choice for attendance. And we do this, as do all school districts in Colorado for the most part, because it is how we can afford to do special education. If we have a program for children with intensive needs at every school, that means we've got to have a teacher at every school qualified and trained and certified to teach in an intensive needs program, and we simply don't have the funding to do that, as our peers as well. They do not either. And so one of the things we often hear from our charter schools is frustration over the high cost for special education services, even though those services are not necessarily in their building. Because our charter schools typically do not offer center-based programs or programs for kids with intensive needs. And so, but the reason they, you know, they're charged that high cost is because in the state of Colorado, we do what is called a fair share, equal share model, where charters are contributing to the overall cost of what special education costs in the district. So for example, if we have a student who is identified with autism, and they're not able to be served at a school they've open and rolled to, like a charter school, and they need to come back into one of our center-based programs for children with autism, we, you know, we're paying for that child, even though that child's choice might have been a charter school. So part of my frustration around all this, too, is I think, I think we're limiting families from being able to have their children in the schools they want to have them in. Many times, siblings, so typical siblings, are in the home school of attendance, are able to open and roll to a school where they don't need special education services, where an older or younger sibling who needs special education services are actually in another school. So that, and that happens all over the state of Colorado. That is not unique to District Six. And in some cases, our rural districts are actually even sending their children to us to be educated, and then paying us the tuition to educate, to have their child in one of our center-based programs. So it, you know, and Natalie, I loved your question, Ms. Mash, because you asked what it would take, and you know, I appreciate it, because you're new to this work, and so you're coming at this with a fresh lens about like, so why are we not doing this? When really, I think those of us who've been in the field for so long, we've just tolerated this. We've accepted it, and we aren't even asking that question about why are the feds not fulfilling their promise? Because they have not fulfilled it for so many years, that we're just accepting it, kind of like, like Amendment 23 here in Colorado. We just have come to accept it. So thank you for your question.
I have a quick follow-up question, and that was just, has it ever been funded at that 40% since 1975?
To my knowledge, no.
Well, thank you, Mr. Lidiac. Thank you for your work and understanding the legislative process and continuing to advocate, both at a state level and at a national level, for better funding for our kids.
There is something about, you know, if you're not, if you're not at the table, you're on the table, so.
And you're on the menu.
You're on the menu.
At the table.
So it's important.
Thank you for making the time and taking that on. We do have a couple of contracts now to approve, and so both of those will be action items. So we'll do the first contract for a roof for Scott Elementary. Would someone like to make a motion for approving that contract?
I move that we accept the Superior Roofing Contract as presented.
Thank you both. Is there any discussion around this contract?
Yes. So I just wanted to pull that to be able to get a little bit of additional information related to this. So this is coming from Mill Levy Override Moneys, which we are, again, so thankful to our taxpayers for passing that. But then also, talk a little bit about the best grant opportunity that you're looking at. What happens if it comes through? What happens if it doesn't come through? And what's the timeline?
That's a great question. So the deadline for the best grant application was actually today. So we submitted that last week, so they should have that. I believe they will look at those throughout the month of March, and so we should know something probably by April. And the plan is, if we were to receive that grant, then that would, of course, allow us to free up money to do some other desperately needed projects throughout the district. However, since we do have the Mill Levy Override, if we do not receive that grant, we do have the money set aside to replace that roof at Scott Elementary. And that roof has been identified as probably the most critical in need of repair, replacement across the district, and so the belief is that if we can replace that roof, that will actually buy us some time for the life of that building. If we cannot replace that roof at that building, then we'll probably need to replace that school sooner rather than later.
And that comes at a much.
And that's a much bigger price tag, yes.
So then, the other question that I had is, it says, upon completion of a competitive bid process, I know on the buses, we see its lowest price, and we see some of the people that bid on the buses. On this one, would you tell us more about that competitive bid process?
Absolutely. So in this process, for the roofing projects, we do have a contractor that we work with that's a roof specialist, because it is quite complex and way beyond my expertise. And so we work with this consultant who helps us write the specifications for the roof, helps us pre-qualify bidders, and so we had, it's like, seven or eight different entities, different companies, that we pre-qualified, meaning they had the right insurance and liability protection and skill set and experience to be able to even bid on this project. And we received bids back from five different companies. The Superior Roofing Company was the lowest bidder, and sometimes people go, well, does that mean that you're getting not quite the great quality that you could with someone else? And we are confident that we are getting the same quality. The specifications were written to be very tight, and we also have the same consultant on the job periodically checking the progress to make sure that the contractor is living up to what is in the contract and, you know, doing the work that he said he would do. So we're confident that we will get the highest quality project out of this.
Thank you for the information about the bidding process.
You're welcome.
Any other questions?
I'm sorry, what, when was the notification of the best match?
I believe that we'll know something in. I believe that we'll know something in April. I'm not exactly sure of the timeline, but I think it's April that we would know one way or the other if we're a finalist.
Again, yeah, the best, the Best Up program has been such a, a great resource and benefit to this district, and, and we appreciate that program at the state.
Yes. And you might remember that we've done two other roofs with best matches, just completed those, McCullough and Dos Rios recently. So, we are definitely taking advantage of that program.
Just a reminder, these dollars now are dollars from the marijuana tax. That, that is what's funding the best grant dollars now. It's when people ask, "What about those marijuana dollars?" That's how we, we've gotten some help with some of our roofs. Asbestos at Greeley West.
Well, again, it is a program that has come under some scrutiny and has had some, some concern about whether or not it would be funded or supported, but, but as, as of now, it, it seems to be a healthy program that the state intends to support, so.
Any other questions for our staff? Ms. Richards, would you give us a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Hayfley?
Aye.
Mr. Lydiak?
Aye.
Mrs. Mash?
Aye.
Mr. Matthews?
Aye.
Ms. Pappas?
Aye.
Dr. Richard?
Aye.
Mrs. Solis?
Aye.
Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you. Now, we'll need, also need a motion for, to approve the contract for, let me find it, our, our busing contract from McCandless DJA.
I move that we approve the contract with McCandless DJA for the, for the bus as presented.
I'd like some discussion, please. Can we discuss it first?
We are gonna, yeah, we are gonna discuss it, that's right. And Ms. Mash?
Okay, sorry. Uh, yeah, so I just wanted to pull this out of the consent agenda. Mr. Henson, you gave us a great update on the transportation situation last meeting, and so I just wondered if you could speak to the number of buses that we're requesting, what our current fleet looks like, and, you know, we had talked about the trouble that our transportation was in, and now it's all very positive, so I just wanted to hear more about this as well.
Okay, so for this bid, we have six buses on the bid. Two of them are what we call large ramp, special ed, special needs buses. With the size, if you, well, I guess if you look at some of the wheelchairs that our kids are in, as they get more mobilized with more batteries, they also get heavier. And so we need to repeat, replace as part of our fleet, our fleet, but we're going with these large ramp buses because of better support for our kids as they get older with the ramps. And then also, it allows us flexibility in the back of the bus, where as we add runs, that not only can we use these buses to pick up a student or two that is in a wheelchair, but we also use them to pick up homeless kids, other students that are not wheelchair-bound, and they can sit in the back of the bus, so we find them to be very, very flexible. And then the other four buses are conventionals, which means they're not flat in the front, they have the engine out in front, which are more reliable for us, they're easier to maintain. There are also diesel buses, which allows us to not worry about how far from home we're going. We can go over mountains on trips. We, we don't have to worry about stopping for gas, you know, frequently, and so they tend to be more reliable for us, and they also are cheaper than getting the flattened nose buses.
So, you all remember when I brought you the possibility of considering outsourcing transportation? And one of the pieces that would come with outsourcing would be a replacement of our fleet. Because we are not moving in that direction at this time, and we're looking to continue to increase our number of drivers, we know that we need to make some investment in our fleet. And so this is the first wave of, of that initial investment in our fleet and in replacing these six, or really adding six buses. And if at some time, we would look to outsource, then these buses would be eligible to be sold to that vendor, or, or to someone else. But at this time, with making the decision to not outsource, we need to invest in the fleet. So that's what we're asking you to do. This is Mill levy override dollars, and as you recall, we did say that we would improve transportation with Mill levy override dollars, so it's an appropriate use of the dollars.
All right, I don't see any other comments, so Ms. Richards, would you give us a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Hayfley?
Aye.
Mr. Lydiak?
Aye.
Mrs. Mash?
Aye.
Mr. Matthews?
Aye.
Ms. Pappas?
Aye.
Dr. Richard?
Aye.
Mrs. Solis?
Aye.
Motion carries seven zero.
All right, well, thank you so much. Thank you for joining, joining us. This is, that concludes our business. Meeting is adjourned.